I call this a regularly scheduled meeting in the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order. And at this time, I ask you to join me in prayer. This is a prayer for sound government. The Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the president, members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, to all in administrative authority grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To senators and representatives and those who make our laws in states, cities, and towns, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill our obligations in the community of nations. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, who may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you here at the meeting tonight. We're going to begin with item one, which is a public announcement of events and ask Dave Brown, Republican Information Officer, to talk about those events.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners. I've got a rather extensive list, so I'll try to make some of these reviews fairly short. The On the Farm Art Exhibit out at the Harlingen Arts and Heritage Museum will continue through the ninth, so if you hadn't had an opportunity to get there yet, you've still got a few days to take that in. Also, the Dia de los Muertos Altar Exhibit is still up at the museum and it will be up through November 9th. So if you're celebrating the holiday a little late, you still have time to get out to the museum for that. The 21st Annual Rio Grande Valley Birding Festival is well underway. A reminder that their website is rgvbf.org. There's a tremendous list of things going on. I was visiting their website this afternoon. The olive sparrow is the best bird this year. The two of their keynote speakers will be Thursday, Steve NG Howell, and Friday will be Catherine Hamilton. There's art and writing contests. The trade show is free. As you often repeat, the trade show is free. So the public is welcome. There are a lot of things to discover. I believe some of the field trips are full, but there's just a wide variety of events and presentations going out there. And it's not just people from way outside the valley and around the world that come. They, of course, are more than welcome to have the local people. And even if you've been there other years, there's always something new to see this year. Before I click another slide, I wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday, from 9:30 to 11:30, there'll be the Fall Litter Bash. It's going to be headquartered at McKelvey Park, and they're looking, still looking for individuals and groups to help. The number to call, Keep Harlingen Beautiful, is 216-5302. And if you register in advance, I believe they have like 500 free t-shirts. So if your t-shirt wardrobe is running a little, you know, light, you can get bags, gloves. And they're going to be taking whatever's collected in those two hours back to McKelvey, and then they'll be sorting it for recycling. So it's a real win-win situation. Also, on Tuesday, I want to remind everyone, it's Veterans Day. At the 11th hour on the 11th month, there's going to, 11th day, there'll be the ceremony at Pendleton Park. There'll be a combined service color guard. The Memorial Middle School Choir is going to sing. And the guest speaker is scheduled to be Paul Williams, who's a Marine veteran and the director of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development, Council Police Academy, and Training Center. So we invite the public to come out for that event, of course. At our library, there's a wide variety of things ongoing there. They've got Character Wednesdays, Wednesdays from 4:15 to 5:15. It's an excellent opportunity for kids and families. You know, brothers, sisters, mom and dad, everybody else. They're doing special series on entertaining books and popular characters. So they'll be emphasizing character development in the books. They'll be doing crafts. They're going to have a puppet show. If you have any questions, call Laura Garza at 216-5820 to get in on that. Also, at the library, they're going to have a series on bilingual tales. There's a couple of, or at least one or two of those coming up yet in November. They're going to have Storytime in English and another language. So it's going to be an opportunity to expand cultural horizons by learning phrases and words. Again, they'll be having even a bilingual puppet show to go with that. And they're going to cover languages like French, Spanish, Japanese, Italian. So in our global world, it's a wonderful opportunity to go global. Also, at the Harlingen Library, they're going to have a Manga and Anime Club that meets, and it meets each Sunday during, meets one Sunday a month, excuse me, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. And that'll be, they'll be having their final series in the meetings November 9th, but it's a great chance to do cosplay, meet other kids that are 12 to 18-year-olds. There's music, snacks, all kinds of fun. Again, the contact is Laura Garza, who must be a very busy person there, at 216-5820. And the biggie for all of our Dallas Cowboy fans and arts and entertainment, everybody else, is going to be the November 15th Blues on the Hill with, combined with the Pena Eye Institute Festival. This will be the eighth annual. It's from 4:00 to 11:00 o'clock on the 15th. There's also going to be the Dallas Cowboys Museum there from 2:00 until 6:00. And the Cowboy Cheerleaders are there from 4:00 to 6:00, although I've heard from people who go on a regular basis, the Cheerleaders enjoy it so much, they hang around a little extra. They must love Harlingen and they have the Rio Grande Valley in their heart. Some of the performers will be Sergio and the Ropen the Wind, ZZ Not, Bush Riders Dave, and Hambo and Blues Review. It's free admission, free admission, free admission. So please come up. That should be a wonderful opportunity to celebrate football.
Dave, is it free admission?
Free admission is what I've heard. That's what I've heard. And you can also call the Pena Eye Institute, 661 UC for details. So it's going to be a wonderful autumn footballer's works. Harlingen Half-Mile Marathon is coming up on November 16th. We've covered that one before. There's a couple of events within the marathon itself, such as the two-man relay and a 5K run for people that are working up to the half marathon status. So that map has got a little bit of the details, but they'll basically go from downtown out to the Iwo Jima Memorial and back. And registration is at footworkshalf.mvevents.com. I think registration is also on our website for the Harlingen Conventions Bureau. And since this is November, and I'm not exactly sure when your next meeting is, I wanted to do a quick reminder about the 20th Annual Feast of Sharing Dinner. That will be Friday, November 21st, starting at 10:15 at the Harlingen Community Center. I know a lot of my fellow employees have signed up to volunteer for that. I'm sure the Commissioner will probably be there if at all possible. So we're looking forward to the holidays here in the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Item two is an announcement by Dolores Watts, Salvation Army Major, regarding the Salvation Army 2014 Christmas Kettle Campaign and Angel Tree Program. So Dolores, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you all here today.
Mayor Chris Boswell, City Commissioners, staff, and guests. My name is Dolores Watts, and this is my husband, Guy Watts, and we are from the Salvation Army here in Harlingen, Texas. And we are responsible to help the needy in Cameron County. And I just thank you so much for allowing us to just share our story about the Salvation Army. And my right-hand woman here, Ruthie. She's handing out some pamphlets on the Salvation Army. I just want to share about one thing on here, and that's our family thrift store. When you donate to the Salvation Army, we not only sell those items, but we also give them away. And we give close to 1,000 items of clothing, dishes, shoes, suitcases, away to the needy of this community. So I want you to know that when you donate to us, we are helping people who are in need. I do want to mention our Angel Tree Program. And we will have our angels out at the mall, here at Via Vista Mall, and also at Walmart. And our Angel Tree Program will be from November 28th up until December 15th. So we encourage everyone who can to take an angel and provide simply four things: one top, one bottom, a pair of shoes, and a toy. And you can get together with your civic clubs, or with your church, or with any kind of organization that you're in, and help a needy child receive a new toy for Christmas. Last year, we were able to help close to 1,000 children with the Angel Tree Program. But we didn't do this alone. We did it with your help. And so we appreciate all the community coming together and helping the children of their own community. So thank you so much for your generosity.
And of course, the day after Thanksgiving, our bell ringing starts. I know that several of you rang the bell last Christmas, and we thank you for that. And where's my friend that made all the announcements? That now the National Salvation Army Red Kettle Kickoff is at the Cowboy Game. Now, it is not free. You have to, but you can watch it on TV for free. How about that? So if you watch it on TV, it's free. But this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and we use these funds not only at Christmas time, but what's left over, we use throughout the year to help the less fortunate of our community. So it is really important that we have a great kettle campaign so that we can help those in need in our community. And yeah, I think you have a-
We have a, we have a little bell for all of you as a reminder of our Salvation Army Christmas campaign. I think you can wear this around your neck if you want to, or-
What do you put on your Christmas tree?
Or place it on your Christmas tree, or give it to a friend. So Ruthie is handing those out. Thank you, Ruthie.
And I do want to thank the Commissioners and any of you, and the mayor, and many people in the room that are ringing the bells. It's greatly appreciated. I do have two more slots, one hour slots open. So if any of you want to come, it's, we have a good time. We see, you see a lot of people. It only lasts an hour. It goes pretty fast, doesn't it, Mayor?
If it's not too cold.
It was bad last year.
And I will say that we were in another community here in Cameron County last night at the-
Sam, we won't mention Sam Benito.
Okay, there you go. Ruthie said it, we won't mention it. But they, they are going to ring bells too. So, but I think, I think y'all can beat them. So a little friendly competition here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Wish you all the best success this year's kettle campaign. Item three is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep held on October 11th, 2014, on Longmont Garden and the lazy art trade department.
Mayor, City Commissioners, just to give you a quick update to the amount of debris picked up. We helped our monthly neighborhood clean sweep from, on October 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and we removed 5.85 tons of debris from the area. Also, we picked up 25 tires from the area. And this was District One Commissioner Castillo's district. You see some of the volunteers helping us out. We want to thank the Luz del Mundo Church and all the volunteers that were out there. And we also want to remind everybody that November 8th coming up this next Saturday, we have our next Neighborhood Clean Sweep. And it's from Bush Street to Coolidge Street, and including Reagan and Carter Street. So if there's any volunteers out there, you can call our code enforcement department at 216-5200 if you want a volunteer. We also want to remind everybody that the next community White Trash Update is November 22nd, and it's going to be from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Ranger View Park. So if you have any trash, instead of driving it all the way to the transfer station, you can bring it over to the Trash Update on November 22nd.
Do we have any volunteers for Saturday here? Samuel Sanchez? If I call your name, raise your hand or come on up. Asayel Gomez? Jaime Torres? Israel Hernandez? Why, Cardenas? We want to recognize them and we'll give them their certificates and thank them for such a great trash update. Commissioner Castillo, I mean Sanchez, great job. So thank you. All right, item four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 15th, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Haring down another, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent agendas five, eight. Items five, A, B, and C, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, consider take action to approve contract between the City of Harlingen and the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2014-15 for $115,757 for teen service programs and authorize City Manager to execute the contract.
Mayor, City Commissioners, we have before you is a contract for the Boys and Girls Club. And a couple of changes that we made was we replaced "Boys" on the contract with "Club." The insurance coverage, we changed the limits. We increased them to reflect what the city requires. And the statement of work, which is the compensation, we increased that to $12,500 to reflect what City Commissioner approved a few weeks ago. Staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Gerald, we appreciate the work that you are doing that fulfills the terms of this contract. And we have a lot of faith and trust in your ability to carry this out. Thank you. Item seven, consider take action to approve a year contract between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Quarantine for the use of Pendleton Pool and Victor Pool.
Mayor, City Commissioners, one correction. The caption of the agenda item doesn't reflect what we are recommending. We're recommending the contract to be for one year. Because our thought was, we visited with Rick Building, the attorney, to see if we can change the type of contract that we use for this service. So we want to issue the contract for one year. That'll give us time to go ahead and change the type of contract that we use. Right now, the contract is expired, so we're using the same type of contract with the facility use agreement. Terms are the same. The only one thing that we changed was, in the event that we have to close the pool down for, if it's a storm, lightning, anything, we would have to either have them use another pool, or they would have to reschedule. So we did allow for that accommodation. But other than that, everything's made the same.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the contract between the City and the Hat?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those who favor, say aye.
I do have, on the, I believe on the caption, it calls for the nonprofit, and you didn't get all that compliant with?
Yes, sir.
It was all compliant. You just had them back them.
The insurance, the insurance ended 5/12/23.
Okay, perfect. In that case.
Okay.
One thing that Dan brought to my attention. If we do change it to one year, we do need to make a change to the, number three, the consideration. Instead of it being 24 months, it has to be 12 months, and it'll be $2,400 instead of 48. So we'll make that, make that change and get it to City Manager.
Okay. Those changes, changes accepted with the motion in the second. All right. All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign. And congratulations to the staff for not having everybody here this year. All right. Item A, consider to take action to renew the demonstration year, DY3 contract between the UT Health Sciences Center of San Antonio and City Harlingen for DY4 from October 1st, 2014 to September 30th, 2015.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the second year of the grant with the School of Public Health to promote health and healthy lifestyles to our citizens. And it runs from October to September. It's called Demonstration Year Four, but it's actually Year Two.
Is there a motion to renew the, or take action on the demonstration project?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider take action to approve the executive office of Harlingen's manager, executive officers, amend the employment contract, increasing his salary. We have, we have members of our academic development corporation here. This, I think this is really just ineffective budget, really an approval of the budget. The board has worked on Rodell's contract, and they are, and they have authorized an increase to his salary to $150,000. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you all for your hard work. Item 10, consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City Harlingen Code of Ordinances. Ordinance numbers 1248, grand coupons, 1129, summer fees, 0848, range membership fees, 0847, grain fees, 0079, rental fees, 9755, personal car fees, providing for annual handicap fees for rental fees, for conference rooms, and tournament outside food coverage fees, all taken by the Department of Sports providing for competition, pending matters pertaining to the full going.
Commissioners, this is, we're asking for an increase in our, in our fees to help keep pace with expenditures, payroll, fuel costs. Electricity have all gone up over the last eight years, and car prices have not. And we do need to keep pace with it.
Okay. Are there any questions about this?
Yeah, so will we still be competitive with other golf courses in the valley?
We'll still be well underneath the other golf courses.
Okay. Ask the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
Ordinance, City Harlingen, Texas, amending ordinance numbers 12-48 regarding 100 grand, 211-29 regarding summer rates, 08-48 regarding range membership fee, 08-47 regarding green tea rates, 00-79 regarding rental rates, 97-55 regarding personal car fees, and providing for annual handicap fees for rental rate, for conference room, and tournament outside pool coverage fees. All the golf courses provided for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the full going.
Is there a motion about the ordinance on first reading?
So, I'll be second then.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? This is a, you know, our golf course is self-sustaining. It's an enterprise, and we operate like a business, and it has done very well. In the past, we've always been able to utilize their fund balance to make capital improvements out there and improvements to the golf course. So we have a really well-run course and utilize quite a bit of the public. So something to be proud of. All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider to take action to change or postpone the date of the Harlingen City Commission's regular meeting on November 19th, 2014 due to the National League of Cities Conference in Austin from November 18th to 22nd.
Mayor, City Commissioner, I would ask that the Commission consider moving up the, our next regular meeting. We have several items that we would like to put before the Commission for next week. So if we could maybe look at the calendar and I'll get with City Secretary Volcon and see if we can schedule a special meeting for the following week, next week.
For next week?
For next week, yes.
All right.
We were looking at Tuesday.
Right. And canceling the next schedule because we're all going to be out of town.
It's actually Monday, November 10th.
Monday? Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to postpone, to reschedule next week's, or to reschedule the regular meeting on November 19th to a time which is available to the Commission? As a special meeting?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those who favor, say aye. opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, that would be, next Tuesday would be Veterans Day.
I was going to say it's Veterans Day.
Well, it's Monday. Monday, I'm sorry. I think it's Monday. I catch you for Monday.
Monday. You said Tuesday.
I said Tuesday.
You did say-
I meant Tuesday, Monday. We've got two business days between now and then.
Okay. Either one is final meeting, either to the 10th or the 11th in the afternoon. But not in the, on Monday, up for me. Item 12, consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number 97.03B5 to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in Fair Park for city-sponsored and co-sponsored events.
Mayor, Mayor, City Commissioners. We brought this to you because we have city-sponsored events at both McKelvey and at Longsiel Hill, Fair Park. And we do sell alcohol, so we'd like to get approval through our ordinance to be able to do, have the consumption and sale at both those locations for city-sponsored events.
And when you say city-sponsored events-
Like the Blues on the Hill.
Does that mean the city is, is the vendor? Or we will allow-
We will allow-
Other vendors to come in?
And generally, the Knights of Columbus is the one who sells.
I, I thought we had already, I thought we already had this because when we were sponsor of-
Rio Fest.
Rio Fest, we, you know, the beer was sold out there.
Well, we just wanted to make sure that-
You don't want me to say that? Great. You still think we need to amend the ordinance?
Yeah, and reviewing the ordinance, I think we just make it a little clearer that we do have that.
So I'll read the caption.
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending chapter 97.03B5 for the Harlingen Code of Ordinances to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in Fair Park, Longsiel Park, in conjunction with activities which are sponsored or co-sponsored by the City of Harlingen, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the full going. And this, by the way, when the ordinance is amended, I had copies I had given. I don't know if you hand those out. Anyway, and the adoption of the ordinance, it continued to keep McKelvey Park in there, but the caption just referred to the change, which is adding Fair Park.
Okay, so McKelvey's, my question was going to-
We're not leaving that out. If you, if the actual ordinance, if, if we're just rewriting that section of the ordinance- that section of the ordinance and say, and it'll say the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at McKelby Park and Fair Park is allowed in conjunction with, so.
We don't need to clarify that it's not the city that's selling that alcohol?
Well, we were just cleaning up the language a little bit as it existed in the ordinance. I don't think we do, because I think we have, we have control over that otherwise with regard to who's going to be there and who isn't. It's a city event, or it's a city co-sponsored event, so I think we exercise control already over who can and cannot be there. Am I right about that?
That's right.
I mean, we can come back, we're going to come back and do some additional work on this ordinance later, but this was kind of something we needed to do now as to this one aspect, but if, if you want us to do that, we can certainly-
I think it ought to be clear that it's the organization that's handling that, that's responsible for that, and not the city. And I don't know what other, what standard in terms of-
We could, we could-
Liability requirements, I don't want to get too deep into all of that.
Okay. We could, we'll take a look at that, we could actually maybe add a little language before the second reading, which is next week.
You know, I mean, all I'm talking about is to allow, allow not-for-profit, or whatever type of organizations happen, we want to define it, to allow, allow them to sell at city-sponsored or co-sponsored events at McKelby and-
Well, we could say, as, in conjunction with activities, city-approved sellers, something-
Vendors, whatever, whatever, I mean-
Nonprofit, city-approved sellers.
I think the way, personally, I just read it, it says allow for the sale, doesn't say who is selling it, it says we, we're going to allow the sale.
That's the problem, is, is that it doesn't say who's selling it. And so we can construe that it's we're, us selling it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, if you wanted to reflect that-
Just, just take a look at it and see what, what we can do to clean it up.
We can add one that's saying city-approved, you know, sellers.
Yeah, I think that's the one.
City-approved nonprofits.
Yeah, I don't think you want to have somebody that we didn't, that we haven't approved to show up and start selling alcohol.
Well, this, this is the way the language had always been in the, in the existing ordinance. And, but there's nothing between now and the second reading, we could add a phrase in there that said it was city-approved nonprofit organizations.
Right, it needs to, otherwise, I get, you arguably have somebody say, well, the ordinance says I can sell.
Right.
Bearing a city, didn't say I had to be approved by the city, it just said I can sell.
Right. We'll add that language in for the second reading.
Okay, is there a motion?
One other item. It seems to me that in order for a nonprofit to sell, they have to buy a, they have to have a license already, or they could buy a one-day or a three-day license from the state for that event. It's just, nobody can drive up with a cooler and start selling alcohol.
Right, right, right. Well, I don't think we, we wouldn't, I don't know how you, that's managed anyway, I think we're part of the part of-
Yeah, they got a TBC license.
That, that's the way you work it, or-
Yes.
With the, be a now rule, the, the other-
Okay.
So, yeah. We'll, we'll add something to it to address that for the second reading.
Is there a motion to?
I make a motion, okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a sec. We have a motion by Commissioner Sanchez.
I started to talk, and you were still talking.
I'm sorry, you still, you have another?
I'm going to, I'm going to do it real quick.
Okay, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Sam. All those in favor say aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Board appointments, are there any board appointments? No board appointments? Okay. And item 14 is a closed executive session regarding the following items, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.0712, Texas Government Code, by legal advice and counsel, connection with cities' rights to these privileges, obligations led to ending collective bargaining process for chapters 174 of the Texas Local Government Code related to matters of the Harlingen Police and Fire Department, and the pursuant to chapter 551, and to chapter D, BCC Government Code sections 551.0712 and 51.087 regarding deliberations relating to economic development negotiations entered, discussed, and deliberate financial or other incentives with a business prospect of this project mounted in secret legal advice and city attorney regarding the same, and pursuant to section 551.072 regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property for possible city developments within the City of Harlingen. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to move into the back chamber to have an executive session to discuss matters with its attorney. There are no action items on the agenda, so there will be no action taken after, and nobody has signed up for citizen communication, so for all intents and purposes, that's the end of the public portion of this meeting. Thank you.